Now call the Eastland Zoning Commission Special Meeting of April 13th, 2023 to order at 7:34 PM. For those of you who have not silenced your cellphones, now would be a good time. Thank you. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call Mr. Donovan.
Here.
Mr. Dwyer said he was coming. We'll give him a few more minutes. Mr. Granatek?
Present.
Ms. Jett Harris?
Here.
Mr. Peck?
Here.
I'm here. I believe Mr. Ginsburg is out of town. Ms. Markowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Here.
We have our Mr. Mahaland.
Here.
Ms. Speng. And I believe Ms. Hardy is out of town, so Ms. Tukalo is here. Thank you, our ex-officio for tonight. First, we start with the public delegation, and that is time when members of the public are invited to speak on subjects that are not on tonight's agenda. Is there anyone here to speak on something that is not on the agenda? Okay. Yes, now. When we move to the public hearing, Mr. Peck is recusing himself, and we're reseating Mr. Schmidt.
Mr. Dwyer's seat?
Somebody just tried to enter, so it might be him.
Does someone want to go out and look and see if it was him? What we'll be doing is a continuation of the application of ZDM Properties LLC for a special permit and design review to develop properties identified in the applications 338, 344, and 348 Main Street, assessing that 11.2 watts, 165 and 166, into a mixed-use project per sections 9.2.3 and 9.2.4, 25 and 24 of the zoning regulations. Do the presenters, thank you for coming back, have any more to add from your presentation from last week?
I just have something very-
Excuse me, Madam Chair, are we going to set an alternate?
I- Yeah, we'll give him five more minutes.
Then I suggest we do not proceed until we wait.
Well, we can wait five minutes. He just told me three hours ago he'd be here, and he was at the last hearing, and I'd like the continuity of the same person here. So we'll wait a couple more minutes.
Oh, he didn't?
He was right.
It's just not my concern. Hope he's okay. Oh, he didn't? I have a question. While we're waiting, can you review what he talked about last week?
No, we can't. I'm sorry.
It's all right.
No?
No, it's not coming like this.
Okay, we- Ms. Markowitz, can you be seated for now? Thank you. We'll continue. I'm sorry about that. Do you have anything else you'd like to add from last time?
Just one item quickly, for the record, North Carolina National Engineering Associates, they are representing ZDM Properties this evening. As a result of some of the discussion that we had last week regarding sidewalk, there was a suggestion to have sidewalk along Baptist Lane, minimally, at least from the rear of the building to Main Street. So we have revised the plans accordingly. We're showing sidewalk along Baptist Lane. There is a very small strip of lane that where the sidewalk will be coming onto the property, so we would dedicate a sidewalk easement for that portion. It's only about 100 square feet.
Okay.
We would grant a sidewalk easement as we were instructing that sidewalk, which is very well-
Okay. The commission members, we heard a fabulous presentation, very detailed, last week, and we've had several days to look over the presentation that was emailed to us. Does the commission have any questions for the architect or the developer?
I do, yep. So after our meeting, I actually visited the site twice. I visited the site, I believe, the day after our meeting, just to walk the properties, get a scale of the buildings that are there right now, look at the properties to the rear, just get a general overview. Nothing really came of that. I've visited the property again today. The public had concerns about Baptist Street, the amount of foot traffic, and the width of the street, and obviously, in this proposal, we're adding vehicle or traffic with that parking lot that's now on that street. Just from my observations, and unfortunately, I did take photos and some video, which I can't enter into evidence right now because it's not in the correct format, but when you watch, especially on a day like today that's nice, you have a lot of beach traffic, you have people accessing the street from Main Street, Baptist from Main Street, you have pedestrians accessing the beach via Main Street, walking the streets. When one of the members of the public indicated that Baptist Street wasn't wide enough, I was obviously concerned about that issue. So just from my observations, it doesn't appear that it's necessarily an issue with Baptist Street itself. It's an issue with the entrance of Baptist Street. It's significantly narrower than the rest of Baptist Street. And if you're a vehicle traveling from west to east, and you're turning onto Baptist Street, you can't make the turn without entering into the oncoming lane. And as some of the presenters mentioned that last time, that being an issue that traffic has to wait. You either have to wait for someone to pull out, or that person that pulls in has to wait for that traffic to pull out. So that's one issue that I think could be addressed in the site plan, and now if we consider a sidewalk. I know that Mr. Donovan is concerned about sidewalks. I'm concerned about sidewalks, pedestrian traffic. I think by now adding the sidewalk, we're now, again, cutting into, potentially cutting into Baptist Lane or not. And it, just from my observations today, it appears that most people stay on the east side of Baptist Street because there's a sidewalk there. And to me, that makes more sense to keep the foot traffic on the one side of the street and away from your proposed parking lot in the back. So I think we're now, you know, we have a couple of issues with handling traffic, and I don't think necessarily just adding a sidewalk to one side of the street is going to help that. I think it might actually create more of a safety issue. But again, I think in this proposal, widening the entrance to Baptist Street, and again, it's now you have a state roadway, you have a town roadway, we're dealing with an intersection. But again, it was very glaringly obvious, and if we're going to make changes to that side of the street, I think that this proposal needs to include making the street more accessible for the added traffic. And I bring up that up now because we're proposing an added sidewalk, which might create more of an issue.
Well, regarding the sidewalk, we are holding the existing edge of pavement for the sidewalk. The sidewalk is essentially coming into the property or toward the property, so we're not making the road any narrower.
Correct.
However, if, you know, we're adding that four feet of sidewalk plus curb, if that were added to the street instead of the sidewalk, I do see a point.
If I may refer to your drawing for a minute, can I do that? So, right here is utility pole, and this actually isn't an accurate representation of Baptist Lane. This is, this actual portion of the roadway is about three feet. I mean, you could take it from either side, but there's a sidewalk here. It's about two to three feet narrower than it is right here, and that's where the traffic issue comes in, and that's why people have to wait. So I don't know on your drawing where the telephone pole actually lies.
Right there where the guide pole is.
Right there where the guide pole is.
Guide pole, yep.
There's a catch basin there.
Right.
So it's just to the left of the catch basin.
Okay. So again, it's hard to explain it from looking at this, but if you actually go on a site and you look at it, you can see that there's a choking of the roadway that could easily be addressed by either shrinking your outdoor patio, moving your, you know, we're talking a matter of feet, I think, to improve it, not only in, obviously, the utility pole is creating a bigger issue as well.
There's actually two.
Two of them?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's two that are joined together.
One is not being used, yeah.
Yeah, and then there's one-
One is a guide pole.
Right.
One you've got for the actual utilities, and the second one is for the guide wire.
Yeah. So it's clearly a problem there, and I think this could be a good opportunity to address that and, you know, address some of the concerns that the public brought up at the last meeting.
I really don't have any objection to that. We are showing the sidewalk that was requested. If it were a roadway widening or improvement, we would have that, and if it's, you know, one or the other, it's how this problem happened, in my opinion. I mean, we may have to work with the utility company regarding the location of the utility pole to see what kind of relief we could get if they would slightly relocate the pole a little bit to assist us in that road prudish that we get there.
If someone make an existing problem worse by adding more traffic to the roadway?
Right. Well, the other thing too, I mean, regarding the traffic, I mean, the bulk of the traffic from, you know, from this is going to be people leaving for work and people coming off of work. So throughout the majority of the day, we're going to have very little traffic from the people who are actually living here. It's really going to kind of correspond to the work day. Hopefully, before the streets get real crowded out here, the beach crowd starts to filter in. I do agree that at the end of the day, there will probably be, you know, that you've got the people, the beach traffic trying to get home here.
Yeah.
So that might be a little bit of a problem.
And I think an identified crosswalk would help as well, and obviously, that would be a town issue, but, you know, to really identify that as a walkway.
Yep.
It's pretty precarious the way it sits right now.
Does anyone else on the commission have a question?
Yes. You just spoke of traffic. Just have some questions for you. On your traffic study, you referred to the ITE, the Trip Generation Manual.
Correct.
On the information that you provided us, it says from the sixth edition. Are you a member of ITE?
I'm a member of ITE.
Do you have the manuals?
I have the manuals.
Okay, because they're up to the 11th edition now, and there was some modifications made under these uses. I mean, the sixth edition is from the year 2000. So do you have any more recent studies?
Not with me, but I have access to-
Because personally, I would like to see that. In similar applications, we've had traffic studies presented to us from the applicants, from the firm themselves, separate than the applicant, which you are representing. So, you know, I looked into it, and it's just kind of puzzling to me that you would show us statist- yeah, statistics, excuse me, from 2006. You know, and then to your state calculations, how did you come up with those, may I ask?
I just look at the state publishes' average daily trips for their main roads. So I took the published data, I took the total amount of trips that we would be generating for this particular use, and I just basically put together a ratio based upon, we anticipated an amount of trips based upon the trips per day that are published by the state.
And out of what year did you use those studies?
The state of Connecticut publishes them every three years.
And the last one that was done, it was in February of 21. The one prior to that was in February of 2018. So your 9,700 ADT comes from 2018. In 2021, collected during a COVID epic, it shows 6,700, which basically, you know, passenger cars come up for 97%, excuse me, 97% of the traffic. So a more detailed report in terms of the traffic would be appreciated, for me anyway, going from there. Because I looked it up, you know, the peak hours are 11 to 4, you know, in terms of their studies. And that was over, I believe, 10 days in February of 2021, on the 8th it started, and on 17th of February 2021, it concluded. So all of their studies are done in February, March. Back in 2009, it was done in April. And in 2009, in April, it was 10,300. So-
Well, that would actually make the percentage that we contribute to the road a lot less than what we hear, huh?
Understood. I understand that, yep. Ah, what else? Mr. Mahaland, just questions for you. On applications like this, we get communications from other departments and town engineers. Is there a reason why we did not receive?
Yes, there is. You don't get them, I get them. And we have a staff meeting, and they go through it, and they vet it, they meet with the applicant, which we've done, and then I get those reports, and then I report it to you that they've been satisfied. If they're not satisfied, we don't get to this point. We don't have a hearing because they haven't signed off. So the staff has signed off on this from all their disciplines. On the traffic study, this is a state road. I think we need to keep that in mind, and all respect to everybody.
This is from the state?
Yeah, and so they have signed off on this. I'm kind of-
I'm, excuse me, I don't mean to cut you off there, but I'm just curious, because in past applications, you have relayed that information to us, say how they're inconsistent or consistent with the POCD, or if it has met, you know, all the requirements from the town engineers, stormwater runoff, and such like that.
The consistency with POCD is going to be on a text amendment or a zone change, not on a special permit, because it doesn't get referred to formally, so they don't have that kind of input. So you wouldn't get that on the POCD. From time to time, you've seen reports from various members of the staff, and we generally have an issue that could be a little more volatile, want some input from you, and make sure you guys are aware of what we've looked at. But in this case, everybody had signed off. Our engineer did get deployed to Kuwait, so he's gone for nine months, but we have another engineer that filled in and looked at this. And of course, the architect and engineer for the applicant have met with that staff as well. I think, Steven Armour, I think you interacted with both of them. And Alex, I remember you, as I fired his departure.
Have the CAM requirements changed in 10, 12 years?
Have they changed in 10 or 12 years? I don't think so.
I am just curious to know, because some of you know I've been on the commission for quite a while, and on the application across the street for which Mr. Springsfield, excuse me, Springsfield, spoke about, I believe it's known as the Bayview, something like that, we had a CAM review. And I have a map of what is in that area, and we actually follow that.
Yes.
So I'm curious to know why there was no CAM review for us.
Because it was felt that there's no adverse impact on any of the coastal resources because it's so far away, and the afterthought is that perhaps we shouldn't have done a CAM on the previous one that you brought up. Because it's so distant from the waterfront and draw the shoreline on a Main Street in the village.
And on some of the information that we received in our email, you had the storm drainage layout on there, which, where does that dispose to?
The, a good portion of this infiltrated. We have pre-treatment, so what we have is a subgrade stormwater detention infiltration system, storm tech SC740s that go below the parking area. We have roof drainage goes directly into those, and then we have one catch basin that goes to what's called an isolator road, which is essentially a stormwater treatment mechanism prior to the infiltration portion of it. Any overflow to it is discharged to a, we're proposing a manhole to go to the top of the existing pipe in Baptist Lane.
Existing, correct.
Existing pipe in Baptist Lane, correct, and we're tying into that one. We are going to require, because that is-
And the town, I'm sorry, and the town engineer approved that, from what you're telling us?
And the DOT. Right, because we do need a drainage concurrence. It does take a drainage from Main Street, and it discharges it out through the whole wall game there. So we actually have weather reduction in the rate of discharge from the site. We're infiltrating a lot of the stormwater, and we are treating it in accordance with the state stormwater guidelines as well.
Any last questions?
Last questions, I believe I can ask as many as I'd like to, correct?
I'm asking if anyone has any more. You satisfied on mine last time, so-
I do. You were just talking about the crosswalks before, you know, you were going to put in rares. Are you aware that they're already there? And so you're basically just going to paint across the street? Is that correct? I'm all for the sidewalk.
Yeah.
That's awesome. And I agree with Mr. Granatek in terms of the widening of the road. Like him, I did visit the site, and I did watch vehicles coming in and out, along with the pedestrian traffic, which is on both sides of the road, you know. Granted, 90% of it is on the sidewalks like it should be, you know, coming across from the crosswalk across from Main Street, obviously going to follow the flow and go with that. But, you know, quite a few people coming eastward, you may say, will cut across that road, cut across the street and get onto the sidewalk over there, or just go straight down. So, you know, I am glad to hear that you are proposing a sidewalk. I agree with Mr. Granatek in terms of widening the road. You know, there are two poles there. You know, the guide wire they're talking about is actually attached to the new pole there. The other one is cut off at the top, and it has the support pole coming down there. Those can very easily be removed. As for the parking and all that stuff, the egress points, I, you know, again, in terms of the safety, is there some sort of other design that you could possibly come up with? I mean, if vehicles are having a tough time making that turn, passenger cars, how is, you know, like it was brought up before from some of the comments, how is a delivery truck, if you ever do choose to put a restaurant in there? How is a garbage truck going to get down in there, the way that it sits now? So it is something where I think you should consider, you know, even if you make the proposed building smaller, it's a nice-looking building, don't get me wrong. It's great. It looks nice. But perhaps maybe a smaller scale to where you can make some accommodations would also aid in this situation.
If I may comment on the deliveries, currently, there was a tractor-trailer truck, a small semi, making a delivery in the middle of those three lots for Cafe Soul. Though it's happening now, and I would imagine it would not be continuing after this project, because there's obviously no restaurant, and maybe other deliveries, but in terms of restaurant.
The entrance to the parking area allows for what's called a C30 vehicle, which is non-articulating vehicle. It actually has a larger turning radius than articulated small tractor-trailer, like a 43 or a 28. The C30 vehicle, the thing you see like Amazon trucks, things of that nature. Any of those delivery trucks, those are the C30 trucks. Those are the ones that-
I guess my point is those deliveries are happening now, so it may improve.
Correct. What if we can come up with a solution as a commission?
Absolutely.
So please keep in mind that we are elected by the people here, guys. Honest.
Is that it for the commission? Are we ready to go to the public?
One quick question. If you were to widen the road, would it impact the on-street parking, the eight spaces you have in the front? Would you lose one of those spaces?
But he has actually-
No.
Yeah.
Basically, you do have five more.
Because I do frequent Baptist Lane. I walk the boardwalk every day, and it is very difficult on occasion to get out of there. And in particular, because of the sightline caused by the vehicles parked right at the curb, at the corner.
That would be a situation that would be, you know, there was some widening at that end of the circuit. You know, and it could be something as simple as, you know, not even a roadway widening as much, it's just making the radius larger. They're making a larger turning radius that would encourage the traffic to get in easier. Right now, it's a very tight turn radius there. Maybe you have a 57-foot radius there. Most roads, all state roads, they like to see a 20-foot radius there, which assists in the movement of traffic.
May, do you see a greatly improved, greatly improved visibility in terms of the plan having that outdoor patio on that side of the building? The current building, current structure on that side is immediately up against Baptist Lane and obstruction view.
That was actually one of the comments by Bill Shear when we met. He wanted to make sure that, you know, any plantings that we had looking in that direction, the patio, the road running, so that it would block the sightline in that direction.
And am I correct that right now you do have more parking spaces than the state regulation says that you? Yeah?
How about emergency vehicles? Has the fire department been consulting about getting back there?
I'm sorry?
Emergency vehicles.
Emergency vehicles.
Has the fire department signed off on that?
The fire department has, we actually met the fire marshal.
Do you have the-
Just, why is that? Sorry, go ahead.
You had a sketch, which I don't see in our, or I can't tell from looking at our packet. The footprint of this building overlaid on the three buildings that are in existence now. I believe you showed that, but-
I think Peter may have shown that. I believe, actually.
I don't see that.
No. No, we didn't see the storm drainage thing last time either, so.
Well, I don't think actually that building will let on next, and also just have this existing condition's one that shows the three existing buildings.
Well, on the, on the west side, is there more or less distance between the new building than the existing Cafe Soul? Quite a bit?
Quite a bit. The existing, the Cafe-
Because I read it. I think there's 16 feet now instead of zero.
Yeah, exactly.
And how about on the other side?
The other side is a little bit more as well. Of course, I don't have my can to measure from, but let me just take a quick look here. It's quite a bit more. If you look at, if you look at this sheet right here, you see where the location of this building is here, and then you take a look at the existing building, which is probably all five feet off the parking lot yet. So it'll be quite a bit more, three to four times the one that we have.
Ms. Hook, go ahead.
We're actually taking non-conforming setback situation, making it conforming.
I'm just curious, is this going to be a secured building for the residents who are going to be living there? Not that it, just curious about that.
Yeah, it would be secure. You wouldn't be able to walk into the lobby unless somebody lets you in. It would not be an unlocked room.
In terms of what Mrs. Jett Harris asked you about, where's the sprinkler hookup for this? The connection that the fire department would make?
There's a sprinkler room on the backside of the building. There's a sprinkler room on the backside of the building. Once you get in construction drawings, so the fire department will tell us where they want their Siamese connection, if they want one at all.
I'm sure they will.
They actually will, and, uh, and I, and, and speaking with, with Public Works and Engineering, they, they do, there are going to be two separate services, one for domestic water, and one for sprinklers.
Which is required, correct.
They, they have, they have two connections, they don't like how the single plug is going to be able to do that.
I am familiar, yeah. So, the fire marshal signed off on not having a definite decision?
Yes, we told the fire department, we went in to staff meeting, and it was recognized that we needed sprinklers.
Fire marshal, you mean?
Fire marshal there, and we did not discuss the location of Siamese, but that would typically happen during the construction.
On the area that's closest to Baptist Street, you talked about, we had asked the question at the last meeting for storage, for indoor storage for residents who are going to be residing there. Did you have to, did you do any more with that? Did you try to reconfigure that, as you said that you were going to try to do?
Yes, I did take the oversized sprinkler room, split that up so that's half sprinkler, half electric room, and then I took the other big space and dedicated that to storage.
About what's the size of that?
It's about eighteen by twenty.
Just another quick question, is there a reason why the application is not signed? Technically, we, you know, in all the other applications we have, it is signed and dated. You know, technically, we could dismiss this because it is not signed.
I think we'd have to ask a question about that.
Maybe I already have. Okay, it does not make it, because what concerns me on this application here, you have, I noticed last presentation, you mentioned about, you know, the future of a restaurant. On this application, unsigned application, you have takeout restaurants. Now, if you provide us in writing, then you want to remove this and sign it, that's one thing. Because if this commission does approve this, therefore, you can basically change that to whatever you want, because it's an unsigned document.
Mr. Mahoney, could you speak to that, please?
Yeah, I could, um, since it's been adjusted, and Terry has a very good point, it's been adjusted in the hearing that they've withdrawn the restaurant, so we'll want to adjust that, and certainly not being signed, we can get that signed, we probably haven't signed it tonight, just that, and it's a very good point, probably an oversight.
Okay.
Well, I'm, I will, I, I am not comfortable with it not being signed and then moving forward with it. I don't, I think that when we do something like this, we need to know exactly what it is, all of our Ts need to be crossed, our Is need to be dotted, so I'm not comfortable with the application not being signed, and then still moving forward with even discussing it.
And I would also request, you know, letters from the town engineer, from, you know, the consistency of the P O C D saying it is consistent, you know. As I stated before, I've been on this commission for a while, and Mr. Mahoney has passed that information out to him. Now, if it's a slight oversight on his behalf, then so be it, but I would like to see that, because I mean, I've been in the business for a while, and you know, people's words are just that, they are words. If you have it in writing, it is part of the documents presented in the application. I myself, I cannot speak for the other commission members sitting tonight, but I myself would like to see them. Now, if, as you said, they are signed off from the town engineer, the fire marshal, the planning director and stuff like that, it is very easy for them to type up a letter to the commission stating that you, they have met with the applicant, and that they find that it is applicable, excuse me, to the application, or to the use. And that's what I would like to see.
I would agree. Let me add briefly, with all due respect, it's not a requirement, those, as I said earlier, those are staff level meetings, there's not a requirement to have those submitted to the commission. Now, I understand that from time to time, we've had those, and I understand your request, but I just want to share that. And to address the application, if we took a two-minute break, we could have it signed, and they could adjust it to make you guys comfortable.
We're still missing information that I think is really important, like Denise, Commissioner Markovitz brought up, you know, the fire marshal, I mean, we don't have any of that stuff in front of us, so, and, you know, I still, and then if it's not signed, I mean, we can sign it like Mr. Mahoney said.
What would you be looking for from the fire marshal?
The requirements are being met.
Well, the requirements being met, they still, the way the system works is, if this is approved, they go to construction grade drawings, where they then go back to the fire marshal, the building inspector, and they have to meet all those codes. The, they were in a meeting with myself and the rest of the staff, where we went around the table with all of these folks, all these folks were comfortable, and they've essentially signed off in our meetings, which is typically how we operate.
Then give us the information.
But we normally don't do that, that's sort of us, that's what we do.
I've been on this commission for over twelve years, and most of the time you do. And that is what is bothering my mind in terms of why this application-
I think we need to move on.
Not to be stopped.
Yes, please.
Regarding, regarding the unsigned application, we brought the application package down, and the applicant came down to pay the, the fee for it, it was supposed to sign the application at that time, so that, that's the reason why. I'm not saying it's wrong or right, but that's, that's the reason why it was not signed. So, he came to pay the fee.
I'm sure it was just an oversight. At this time, I'd like to invite the public to speak. If you spoke last time, please do not take time to come back and repeat the same thing. You'll come up to the podium, you'll state your name, your address, these are for comments only, not, it's not a question and answer session. Please keep your comments to two to three minutes, since we have a lot of people here tonight. So, first, I'm going to ask if there's anyone here that wants to speak in favor of the project. Okay, I do have one letter to be read into the record, who could not come tonight.
Sheriff, would you mind if anybody that was here last night could raise their hand, so we can get a, sort of a, a visual of who's new and who's not?
So there's-
So, raise your hand if you've been here, you were here last time.
One, two, three, four, five, six. Maybe about a fourth of you were here last time, thank you.
Okay, we're going to read this into the record, uh, this is from Danny Hagan, nine Hague Avenue, Niantic. Good afternoon.
There you go.
There we go, there it is. I'm not sure if this will make a difference, but I attended the zoning hearing this evening regarding, but I attended the zoning hearing this evening regarding the proposed mixed use development at two thirty-eight Main Street. I did not get a chance to speak due to all the negative comments, but I am one hundred percent a proponent, proponent of the project and others like it. With no disrespect to the people who had personal concerns with this project, I have some of my own regarding their proposed solutions. One, parking, parking lots are the worst use of land in terms of revenue for the town and maintenance costs for the landowner. Looking at Niantic on Google Maps shows how much value land along Main Street is already being wasted on parking lots, specifically between La Lorna, La Lorna and the theater. Arguing for this developer to increase parking spaces and cut into develop a land is a disgrace. The real problem that should be addressed is a lack of alternative transportation options in the area other than a car. Obviously, not a short-term solution, but filling in useful land with parking lots today isn't doing anyone any favors in pushing alternatives. There were comments from residents outside of the downtown quarter regarding how difficult it is to bike downtown. I have experienced this when trying to walk to East Coast Taco from downtown. It's a shame that so many people within a short bikeable or walkable distance to the commercial district are forced to drive due to the lack of sidewalks, or even shoulders along so much of Main Street west of Patagonia. This is, however, not an argument to force more parking downtown. Increased walkability would benefit the entire village. Comments against the Norton, I am grateful for the town having approved the construction of this excellent mixed-use building. I walk to the businesses on the ground floor weekly. It is this type of land use that drew my wife and I to this neighborhood. A three-story building is not a monstrosity. If anything, I believe a four-story limit would allow for the economics to sway more favorably and entice more developers to look at Main Street. This would lead to an increase in housing density, more residents to keep their local small businesses thriving, and an increased tax revenue per area to support aging utilities. Examples of actual businesses that are an eyesore, the gas station, which hasn't sold gas for months, and the car dealership. Baptist Lane, I have never felt unsafe crossing Baptist Lane. It is a low-speed road, its narrowness is actually more likely to keep speeds low. Multiple recommendations to widen the road came up today. Data would show drivers would be more comfortable at higher speeds on Bishop if it were wider, and pedestrians would have a longer distance to travel to get across. Both factors reduce safety. I've never felt the need for a sidewalk on the west side of the road, and agree with the arguments of the engineer that it would just lead to people having to cross at the end of the property line to the south in a less safe location. Overall, the design of the building looked great, I would enjoy walking past it each day. I am a huge fan of Cafe Soul, and would hope to see it relocate within the downtown area. Having a possible location for more restaurants like Soul, Dev's, Vincitore's, Dev's Vincitore's, et cetera, would be a benefit to all residents. And I would have ever seen, and I haven't ever seen, anyone in the building with Buckley's appraisal services, but I am sure that this new proposed commercial space would bring some desirable tenants like the Norton did with Azalea and Pearls and Plaid. In my opinion, this is the best type of land use we can hope for. The only thing we are sorely missing is a small neighborhood grocery store, but maybe someday we can hope for a parking lot, hope for the parking lot behind a theater to provide a better use before it gets repaved. Thank you for your time, Danny Hagan, nine Hague Avenue, Niantic.
Thank you.
Did he say he couldn't speak because of all the negatives? Because if you're for something, you're given the option to speak first.
I think he just spoke.
He just spoke, I don't think it's all bad.
Because he said he was here, and he said he didn't have time because of all the negatives.
Some people are uncomfortable.
Just clarifying, that's all.
Let's, um, is, so, who wants to speak next? We're asking for people who are opposed to the project. In the back?
Mary Louise Reardon, Sixth Slogan Drive in Niantic, Huntley Court. Please excuse me, I've never smoked in, in public before. I am so opposed to this. I think it is a monstrosity. I see, I've lived in Niantic since I was three years old, I'm seventy now. I think what is happening to our town, between the highway, Costco, all the new buildings along the highway, and now on West Main Street, there's an entrance going into the woods.
Please speak into the microphone.
Oh, I'm sorry, there's an entrance going into the woods, and it says, no trespassing. And I think about the summertime versus the winter, I think about all of the businesses that have closed on Main Street, the theater, restaurants, retail shops that have come and gone. And I think about the, what I call the yellow monster that you have to look at, going towards Waterford now, it doesn't fit with our town. And this does not fit with our town. I believe that there are many other alternatives that could be brought, maybe make it a two-level instead of a three-level. But I didn't see anything about affordable rents, the rents are astronomical. I want my son to live in Niantic, he can't, he can't afford it. Young people coming into this town can't afford to buy houses, can't afford to rent, and the fact that this proposal is not signed, and please don't placate us with the fact that somebody has said, we had a meeting and everybody's all happy and it's all, you know, go, 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 I don't think that's right. I think what, who was it that said, all the Ts need to be crossed and the Is need to be dotted, is the bottom line. And I really hope the construction of this building goes to a referendum. Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you.
I, I too have.
We need your name and address.
You got it. Joyce Bovey, three seven seven Main Street, Niantic. I don't go to town meetings, I'm just a local citizen, no, no politics involved, never been to one of these in this town, I have with my own business in New York. I couldn't agree more with the woman who just spoke. This gentleman, I don't know what, do you live in Niantic?
This is not a question and answer session, it's just-
I'm just wondering, okay, it's a rhetorical question, you don't have to answer it, do the owners and applicants live in Niantic? Do they know the magic? They do a survey in February of Main Street of Niantic? I don't get that. Cafe Soul is the heart and soul of our community, everyone meets there, everyone, everyone, from the mucky-mucks to the everyday people, all ages, families, it's in the heart where it belongs, on Main Street, not up a hill somewhere, not somewhere else that they're calling downtown Main Street. This building is ugly, just like that awful yellow thing. Niantic is magic, and that's why people flock to Niantic. You take the mystical, magical heart out of Main Street, and they flock to Niantic. They can't get to the beaches, you know, with big buildings like this, this building belongs in a suburb somewhere, and these people don't know the town by a couple of different surveys, this village, its charm, its beauty, the Liberty Green will be dwarfed by it. I, I couldn't be more against it, and I speak for a lot of friends and a lot of neighbors, and I only speak as a citizen with no knowledge of politics. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? In the back, she's coming up.
Hi, good evening, commission, good evening, potential land developers, my name is Joanne, I live down at Forty Pennsylvania Avenue.
Last name?
Ah, Breton. As a previous land surveyor and a design and architectural drafting designer, I can appreciate the beauty of his design, and some people may not agree with me, it does have a little bit of a colonial feel to it, which is what, if we're going to do something down here, that's what we need. We need something that fits in with the beauty of it. Now, I happen to agree with the other people, the yellow building is kind of meh, you know, but it is what it is, it's up, there's nothing we can do about it. But maybe we can make a difference in what happens here. Now, I happen to agree with Mr. Donovan, and I think that doing a scaled-back version of this is going to be more appropriate. And in terms of the height of the building, you know, the condos that are over here, I'm betting that this, the roof, not the roof height, but the ceiling heights are ten to twelve feet. Now, if we can scale back, the, the, the ceiling heights back to eight feet in these places, we can actually shorten the building by even four to six feet, and, and that would make sense to lower it. And I understand that the peaks and stuff are to cover up, you know, all the air conditioning and so forth that, you know, is obviously necessary in a building of this type, you know, that's what's gonna, that's what's gonna be on the roof. So, I'm not completely against it, and I'm not completely for it. You know, I, I really have mixed emotions about it. I've lived in Niantic for ten years, I came down here, I found a cute little tiny little apartment, I can look out over the bay, I love, I've got a millstone just waiting for it to blow, but anyhow, that's my, I was over front row seat to that. But the beauty is, is that I get to see that big ju, beautiful giant tree down front, you know, it, right down by the, by the flagpole is, and there definitely is some quaint beauty to this town. I've also lived here long enough to watch the parades, and I, I want to speak to that guy's letter. I appreciate what he has to say, that maybe there could be some better land use, there's that old sports building where the baseball place was, you know, maybe they can renovate that into a small grocery store, but then there's also the Natural Path store, which I go to pretty frequently. If he's hungry, he can go there. And if he's got that much money and he wants to complain about it, he can go over there, he can survive on the food that's in that store. Sorry. Sorry. So, anyhow, so how, what are you going to tell the kids? Well, mommy, we're gonna walk a mile so we can go see the Christmas parade or the Thanksgiving parade. Those parking lots are full. I look right over them, okay, today, a beautiful Thursday afternoon, all day, the parking lot is full. There's a few spaces here and there. And then I look over towards La Rona. That parking lot has got a lot of parking in it. And then not only that, but you have to account for the people who work in them, okay? The only part of that parking lot that was open today, because I happened to walk through there, and that was at four in the afternoon, was the part that's right behind the theater. Those parking lots are needed. There's no place for people to go. There really isn't. There's, and then what's going to end up happening is people are going to park along the side streets of people's homes, you know, and they're loud, the things I have to go through living next to a parking lot, and I choose to live there, I get it, I do, but people are really going to consider it. You know, it's like, can I put my lawn chair on your front lawn because you want to leave your engine running for two hours? You know, it's that kind of, and somebody else spoke to people who don't live around here. Well, maybe once they live around here long enough and get to know people, maybe they'll understand that, you know, this isn't, and I appreciate what you've done in downtown New London, I really do, it's really magnificent, but this isn't New London. And it's also not downtown mystic. You know, those buildings are colonial buildings, they've been there forever. This is never going to be downtown mystic. You know, and I really feel like, I don't think it's something we should completely discount, but I really think it just kind of needs to be scaled back. And I know some people are probably going to be angry with me for that, and I know a few people in the room right now. And I think that there are options, you know? I mean, if the land is already bought and sold.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
The woman in the black shirt right here? Yeah, yeah, thank you.
That's okay. Peggy Fricks, 21 out of One Road. I have two concerns. One is the size of the building. And I think what she was saying, that it might make better sense to scale it down, is that what you were saying? So that it doesn't, so comes so close to Baptist Lane.
Actually, the new building will be much further away than the current one, but go ahead.
Can you put the picture up of the president?
If you could just continue, yeah.
Um, because.
It'd be good to have the picture up there.
Yes. You see what's up there now? That's, can you put up the one that has the drawing?
Basically, we're talking, it's five or about five foot away now, the new one would be like 16 to 18 foot away.
But there's a patio there that is taking part of that space? Is that correct?
Most likely, yeah.
Yeah, well, so then, it, the whole footprint of the whole building, so you have to count that in part of the footprint. My concern about Baptist Lane is that it is so narrow, you've got, you have to remember, the walkers are not just walkers. You've got strollers, you've got wagons being pulled with kids in them, and if, you've got people going in both directions on the same, on one sidewalk, lots of ti, I walk in town all the time because I'm on out of One Road, so I cut right through Crescent Beach and come into town, walking all the time. And probably half of the time, I have to walk in the road because there's bikers on, you know, alongside gumdrops and lollipops, or there's carriages or dogs being walked, so I give them, you know, a wider berth. So I think it makes better sense to make the property smaller, if we have no choice but have something built there, make the property smaller, widen maybe twice the width, Baptist Lane, so that you can allow for a bike lane, because lots of kids ride their bikes there. You can allow for more pedestrians, strollers, et cetera. Fire trucks, I am sorry, I cannot imagine a fire truck pulling in from Main Street. I just, I, it's hard and I don't generally do that myself, drive in.
If you don't mind if we could round up?
Well, that's, and another big thing, and everybody who knows, has lived in Nyannique through winter knows, Nyannique is very poor about snow removal in downtown. It may be because there's no place to put it, but that's going to make Baptist Lane that much narrower. And I think that, that, those are all, in my mind, those are all really significant issues that need to be addressed.
Thank you for your comments.
Okay, thank you.
There's a, who was next?
This gentleman's had to stand up.
Okay, come on up.
I'm E. John Moore, 18 East Line. I just want some answers, I don't have any to contribute, is, I'm looking at the taxes, how much money that the town is going to get for that building, and then how many children are going to be there, and what's the cost of each child to educate? Are we going to be using money? That was all.
Those are, those are all things we can take into consideration, thank you. Against the window? Yeah, thank you.
If at all possible, if the original drawing that went up tonight could go back up with the added sidewalk, would be helpful, but if not, I'll do my best. My name's Matt Buckholz, I live in 4 Edlin Street in Nyantique. The.
I'm sorry, which was her name?
Buckholz, B-U-C-H.
Excuse me, could, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Could everyone, someone's up here talking, could they please be quiet because we can't hear him when you're talking? Thank you very much.
Thank you, I appreciate that drawing going back up. I just have a few comments. I might suggest, actually, that the letter writer felt that he was unable to speak last time after a lengthy presentation by a very professional and lengthy presentation by a gentleman who don't live in the town on behalf of the developer who doesn't live in the town. It was disappointing that, that the public was requested to keep everything brief last time, so I might suggest that that was why the letter writer didn't. And it is actually rather important that the people who live in the town have the opportunity to speak on to have this. The, I, if I understand, it sounds like the waiver request for the sidewalk not to be added may have been now taken off the application. I am very much in support of the sidewalk going in there. There's no question about it, just all you had to do was be over there today to see the sidewalk on the east side on Gumdrops and Lollipops is inadequate for the amount of traffic that goes back and forth. You know, multiple cars, it's the same thing, cars have to turn in and out. I don't want to reiterate everything, but all you had to do was be over there to see it today. Two-way traffic on the sidewalk on the east side there, the sidewalk can't accommodate two-way tra, foot traffic. So you, the moment you have people walking in both directions, you have people in the street, you saw it all afternoon today. If you come from the west, you make the turn into Baptist, almost nobody crosses over. I disagree with the letter writer, everybody makes the turn and walks without the sidewalk there. Having a sidewalk there would be extremely beneficial. It's unclear to me, I guess, as a resident in that building, you exit to the parking lot, how do you get back up to Main Street without a sidewalk there? Are we asking the residents with no sidewalk to walk up Baptist without that sidewalk present? I, again, I get that it sounds like, hopefully, the sidewalk, that this would not be approved without the condition of the sidewalk present and possibly the widening of the street. The other comment, two comments I had, if I understand correctly, I think there's approximately five parking spaces that are not reserved for residents in the building, that each, each apartment in the building would have one designated spot. Primarily one-bedroom apartments, one or two two-bedroom apartments, but the moment you have two individuals living in an apartment in there, you're going to have multiple cars there. So it seems to me that it's unlikely that the parking can actually even accommodate the residents that exist in the building. The other thing that hasn't been mentioned tonight, but if I recall from last week, was striping Main Street. There are no striped park, parking spots along Main Street. It is unclear to me why we would look to stripe parking, parking spaces on Main Street in front of this building alone. I'm not really clear what kind of precedent that sets, but it seems that, that just, you know, hasn't been discussed. And I think that's it. I guess the last comment I want to just make is, I, the 2019, I think you mentioned during the pandemic was the last traffic study that was done then, which, just to reiterate, was a time when there were fewer cars on the road, which I think was conveyed, but just to reiterate that point.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yeah, thank you.
Hi, Patty Murphy, 39, Cedar Brook Lane, East Line. Some of my comments were going to be what he just talked about. As far as the units go, so there's 18 units, some are one-bedroom and some are two-bedroom, if I understand it right. So, how many of those people are going to be driving cars, right? There's no way that 26 spaces are enough for all of the people who could be living there. And, and as far as like the traffic coming in and out on Baptist Lane, I can't even imagine that, you know, garbage trucks, recycling trucks. I go down to the boardwalk almost every day and walk the boardwalk. And to, to see it today or February and see it after Memorial Day, it's night and day. There's no way to compare it, you couldn't possibly do that. The other thing is, what was mentioned tonight, it sounds like it's being assumed that everybody who's going to live there is going to be leaving at nine and coming home at four or five. They're like, are they all going to be working so there won't be anybody pulling in and out all day long? Thank you.
Good things to think about, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And thank you for your hard work on this, Mr. Donovan.
This, actually, there's two.
Blonde hair in the back, her hands been up for her.
Madeline Miller, 28, Bush Hill Drive. My first question is, it's rhetorical, but I wonder what your, as a board, what your legal exposure is to move forward with an unsigned application that doesn't conform to the discussion that you're having tonight? I have no idea, I'm not a lawyer, but I bet you somebody knows a lawyer who'd like to ask about it. I agree with everything everyone said about the parking. There's not enough parking spots for that. I don't know how many handicap spots you have or how many need to be. If there's going to be a restaurant, I believe there's a state requirement for handicap spots with that, so with that application, I'd like some feedback on how many handicap spots there are. I agree that if you look at the demographics of this town, and I've lived here for 30 years and I remember when I was told I was a newcomer too. They, the demographics are skewing older, they're skewing retired, they're skewing wealthy. I don't believe people are going to go out in, at eight or nine in the morning, or five or six if they're working at EB, and come back at the end of the day. I think we're going to have a lot of retirees that are relocating from elsewhere, and you're going to have a lot of daily traffic in and out, running errands, doing things like that. And that needs to be taken into account. Mr. Donovan, thank you. My neighbors and I on Bush Hill, we've been talking about this, and the comment that comes up every time is, when is someone on these boards and commissions going to do something for the people who live here already? We are going to be squeezed in on Bush Hill, we've got a development going this way, we've got this one here. I'm not against progress. At one time, Yale, Yale had a vision study that was supposed to be what the downtown was supposed to look like. And it was supposed to be a village. We call it the Village of Nyannick. And the Yale study had quaint little, one-story little, beautiful little village buildings. This isn't it. And to approve something that is a takeout restaurant downtown without fully parking, it's crazy. And any apartment that you think charging the rents that are there that are not going to be dual-income couples or dual-retirees and need two spots for every building, you're wrong. And some of the members of the board have been overly complimentary and just the word choice. It would really be interesting and it would be beneficial to the citizens if the word choice were not so complimentary in favor of the developers and could be given, the same benefit could be given to all the citizens. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Is there anyone else? Did you speak last time?
I did.
Do you have something more?
I do.
Okay. Quickly, please, thank you.
Barb Weinchen, 26, Huntley Court. I'm not against this, like many people in this room. My only comment and a possible solution to, I think most of the people that have looked at this and complained about it and looked at the pictures that have been available, see a box. You know, the developer obviously is going to use every amount of space that's, meets regulations. But to me, architecturally, even though I like the materials you're using, it's not a bad design, I think that having some recess spaces in the front of the building would make it look more like it is separate buildings and would fit into the character of, like other people have said, keeping with the appeal of a small-town village Main Street rather than having a box. And I think that's the problem that a lot of people are having with this. I don't even think that it's, it just needs to look like perhaps it's separate buildings. And maybe that's not on the first story, but the second and third story, I think, needs to be separated a little bit. The only other thing that I want to add is, thank you for the people on the board who have done their due diligence and have listened to us and have actually done their research on, based on what the comments were last week. And I do appreciate that because I wasn't sure if that was being taken into consideration. The fact that, I'm not really sure what the CAM study you're referring to, Mr. Donovan, but if it has to do with the shoreline, Bayview across the street is much further from the water than this current property. And if they needed to look at the resources and the impact on the shoreline for a street, something across the street, then I don't understand why something practically on the water isn't looked at for the coastal resources and the impact that it has.
Thank you.
Can I say what I forgot?
Please, quickly, thank you.
Sorry, Madeline Miller, Bush Hill Drive. I just wanted to address that letter that said the parking lots in town are the worst uses of space. The parking lots are needed. And I find it interesting that he had that comment on a night when you have people from the theater who are looking to bring people back into downtown and need that parking lot for the theater. And anyone who tries to come down on a weekend, I live less than a mile away, I will not come to downtown on a weekend because it's so crowded and parking is difficult. I would love to, but I won't. So, I think that letter writer needs to spend a little bit more time in town, and while I'm here, I know this isn't it, but I support your theater project that's later on the agenda.
Thank you.
I think, this woman in the green right in the middle row, I think, did you have your hand up a couple times? Yeah. Oh, you did? Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Last call. Anyone else? No? Okay, thank you all for coming and sharing your opinions. Right now, I need a motion to either close or continue this hearing.
Madam Chair, I have a question. So, you know, if we were to request letters from the town engineer, the fire marshal, et cetera, we would not be able to present those into our evidence if we close a public hearing?
That's why we have a choice of continuing it?
I'm just clarifying.
I have a clarification. As staff, I could bring those in after the fact if it was closed because they are also staff, they help us all on these projects, and so I believe legally we could introduce those in as comments if that's, if you want to move in that direction.
You believe or you know?
I believe that's correct. I stand by that statement absolutely, that's what I think.
And also a signed application?
So then we would continue this?
We, I mean, if it's a five-minute break, I can get it signed, it's up to you what you choose to do.
I believe we need to continue this.
Yeah, I do too.
There's a lot of people out there that are.
There's a lot of people out there that are not comfortable. We need to address some concerns, and one of the biggest concerns being the Belayne, the scale of the building. I mean, I think these things are something that need to be addressed and we should continue the public hearing.
I need a motion.
I would like to make a motion to continue the public hearing.
I second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Of staying? Five, five, one, zero. It would be next Thursday. Don't you? We can't go past the 11.
Right, you have 35 days to close the public hearing. So we go, we have a meeting next week. With the 20th, a lot of other items on, but we should continue to that.
Why don't we take a five-minute break and then we'll continue the meeting? If we could recite Mr. Peth now?
Watch the staff.
Thanks, Bill.
Hello there.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to the next item on the agenda. It is a proposed text amendment to Section 20, addition of Section 20.20.9 of the East Line Zoning Regulations for Niantic Bay Playhouse, 267-283 Main Street, Niantic, Assessors Map 12.1, Lot 3. Has the legal ad been run, Mr. Mahalan?
Yes, it has.
Thank you. If Mr. Granatech would mind reading Bill's memo?
Sure. Mail to East Line Zoning Commission from William Mahalan, zoning official, regarding the proposed zoning regulations text amendments, date April 11, 2023. This amendment is being proposed by the new Niantic Bay Playhouse, which will occupy the old Niantic Movie Theater in Niantic Village. The playhouse will be a live theater featuring theatrical productions. The organization tends to host several live productions throughout the year. As part of the operation, we would like to sell alcoholic beverages during production, intermissions, and before and after shows. As a nonprofit organization, the ancillary sale of alcoholic beverages would enhance their bottom line. In the industry, it is commonplace for playhouses to serve alcoholic beverages as part of the normal operation. Because the zoning regulations do not presently provide for alcoholic beverages to be served in such a facility, we are proposing the following zoning regulation text amendment. Add a new Section 20.20.9 to Section 20 of the zoning regulations. Section 20 is entitled General Regulations. Section 20.20.9, notwithstanding the foregoing provisions, it is hereby expressly provided that in a CB zone, an indoor theater or playhouse with live productions may serve alcoholic beverages as an ancillary activity. The sale of such alcoholic liquor and beverages shall be incidental to the principal business of the theater.
And the next memo from D.
Let me actually read the other one first.
Southeastern Connecticut. They both have to be read.
Yeah, I'm going to read this one first.
Okay. No problem.
Letter to myself, Terry Granatech, Secretary, Town of East Line Zoning Commission. Dear Mr. Granatech, actually, it says Ms. Granatech. I am writing in response to an applica, I'm using the, application for regulation amendments for the Town of East Line. The application was received on 3/15/2023. The application was referred to this agency pursuant to Section 8-3 of the Connecticut General Statutes. The proposed amendment recommends a change of the zoning regulations to amend Section 20 by adding a new Section 20.20.9 to permit alcohol to be served at an indoor theater as an ancillary activity. Based on a review of the material provided, I have determined that the proposed amendments are not likely to have a negative intermunicipal impact. If you have any questions, please contact me. Sincerely, Nicole Haggerty, Planted Two. Letter from Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection. Subject, Connecticut DEEP LWRD, comments on proposed zoning amendments to revise Section 20.20.9 to permit alcohol to be served at the theater. That would be add Section 20.20.9. Dear Commissioners, thank you for notifying the Land and Water Resources Division, LWRD, of the proposed text amendment noted above received on March 3, 2023. Acting as a Commissioner's Staff, our office has reviewed the revised text for consistency with the policies and standards of the Connecticut Coastal Management Act, CCMA, Connecticut General Statutes, Sections 22A, 90 through 22A-112 inclusive. It finds them generally consistent. These comments are made in response to the review requirement contained in Connecticut General Statute, Section 22A-104 Subsection E, which requires that any zoning regulations or changes thereto affecting the area within the coastal boundary shall be consistent with the policies of Connecticut General Statute, Section 22A-92, and the criteria of subsection B of Section 22A-102 of the CCMA. Further, this section requires that the notification be sent to the Commissioners of the Energy and Environmental Protection at least 35 days prior to the commencement of the public hearing. Once notified, our office is responsible for reviewing the proposals consistency with the policies of Section 22A-92 and the criteria of Section 22A-102B of the CCMA. This response does not necessarily reflect other planning and zoning considerations which may apply. Should you have any questions regarding this letter or any other coastal management matter, please feel free to contact me via email. Sincerely, Marcy L. Allen.
Thank you. Yes. Could, if you could come to the podium? State your name and address.
Sure. My name is Erin Stanley. I live at 5 Webster Road here in East Line. I've lived here for 18 years.
Thank you.
Thanks. I just want to thank you for your consideration tonight. We have been a nonprofit theater here in this community for over 12 years, and I'm also a theater educator. And it has been our dream to have a theater here downtown on Main Street. And we can't wait to enrich the lives of everyone here in our community, to educate, to inspire, to cultivate, to bring everyone, not only from Niantic and East Line, but from the surrounding communities, to provide a place of joy, a place of enrichment, and a place of live theater. And we would love your support, being a nonprofit. We have saved for the past 12 years, but we are definitely in need of income, and it could very much help us thrive and stay alive here in this community. And we hope to develop partnerships with our beautiful village of Niantic and give back as well. And I'm happy to answer any other questions.
Thank you. Who has a question?
I don't have a question, but I think it's great in terms of what you guys are doing.
Thank you.
Downtown needs it.
Thank you.
A lot of people were sad to see the theater go.
Yes.
So, I mean, I think it is a major plus.
Thank you.
For the Main Street.
And we're going to use the parking. I wanted to say that during the last speech where I was going to say, I need that parking.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Anyone else? No, I love it. I think we're all good.
I appreciate that. Thank you, we all do.
They're doing a lot of hard work there, too.
We are, and we want to thank all of our community because they've really been embracing us and supporting us, and we couldn't do it without you. So thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Does anyone from the public have anything to comment? No? Okay, do I, oh, we have one person?
I'll say something. You have to say like a good thing or a bad thing out there.
You're the only person, so go for it.
I was here for the last one, there were a lot of bad things. Hi, my name's Carrie, and I live in Niantic 252 Giant Snack Road. My last name's Orshel. And I just want to thank Erin for really revitalizing our town. I know that there's a lot of people working to help the vision for Niantic come to like a new beautiful space and a new beautiful place. And I think what she's doing has really transformed not just my family and my child, who's an avid singer and dancer and performer, but the lives of many other children. As an educator, I can tell you that this is a service that's going to leave a mark on our community for such a positive way, in such a positive way. And I think that we need to allow and encourage all that we can do here for this, for this purpose, because it's really all good. Nobody's knocking buildings down, nobody's, nobody's creating something that's unsightly. If you've seen the transformation, if you were at the open house of what has happened already, it's nothing short of a miracle. And it is truly the essence of Niantic, a community that comes together when people want to see new growth. And it's amazing. So please consider this and any other things that might happen from this community.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to close this hearing?
I have one question before we do, Madam Chairman. On the East Line application for zoning, if you look down at the bottom, it has Matthew Walker, chairman. I don't know, I know it's a simple housekeeping matter, but I, we're two chairmans later, so I don't know if that makes a difference because his name is on there, Bill, I don't know, but it, should we?
I don't think it makes a difference. Obviously, we all know we have new staff and other staff has left, and we're extremely beyond busy.
Oh, I know.
So it's a housekeeping, we'll take care of it, I'll make a notation, and I'll speak to our new secretary. And I will say, we've dumped a lot on her, and she has been doing a wonderful job.
She has. Yeah, she has, she's been great. My only concern is, is that, is it legal? Because it's not the right person's name on here, that's all.
Well, we can correct that and sign in, and we'll have Ian sign it. If it's approved, then we'll just initial and we'll go forward. And then in the future, we'll have that form changed. It's essentially our form of housekeeping.
Yeah, well, they're not, well, the other ones, they're not like that. The other ones, they'll have just East Line Zoning Chairman, and then now it has, so I just.
Okay, good catch.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion to close this hearing? I make a motion that we close? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against? Abstain? Six, zero, zero. Okay. Next, oh, I hope I don't mangle your last name. We have the continuation of Candace Devondeedus. For Devs on Main, for renewal of special permit for outdoor dining at 255 Main Street, Niantic. This is, is a continuation from last time. Thank you for coming.
Oh, no, my pleasure. We opened about a year and eight months ago. This will be our second full summer coming up. Our original idea when we came here was to use a deck that we currently are using as a temporary structure with the hopes to renovate and do a full patio. We had our contractor come out, take a look at what we wanted to do. Because of the area that, we want to do poured concrete with stamps so it looks nice. The land that the temporary deck is on is under dirt. There's like train track posts around it. That all has to come up. It's not stable. You just can't pour concrete over what is on there existing. The costs for that project are in the many tens of thousands of dollars. So that took us a little bit by surprise. We need to reassess what we can do. We need to talk to the possibility of our landlord who owns the building. We are only leasing. So for us to make a substantial contribution like that into a building that we don't own, it's giving my partner and I just a little bit of cold feet. So what we'd like to do is we'd like to keep the patio that we have with the temporary deck on it. On the other side that is bare, we have a couple raised, three by four raised garden beds that we're putting down there that we'd like to paint a green that would accent the color of the green umbrellas that we're going to be putting up for the season. So we can grow herbs and lilacs, things that will look appealing and might show up on a plate as a garnish, because anything that we're going to grow will be edible. So it is our hope that we can continue the deck like it is for this year while we're reassessing to figure out what we can do that maybe won't cost us quite as much money as we did not anticipate. And I'm hoping you'll let us continue with the outdoor deck, especially since we have that fantastic new theater coming up. And like, so we'd like to be able to be a part of the continuing growth of this village.
I can go ahead one little bit.
Would you be willing to basically get rid of the T-111 and possibly put up like some type of, you know, balusters or something like that?
I don't know what a T-111 is. I'm sorry.
That's what you have on there.
Okay.
Essential decorative plywood that's, you have it on the side.
So, and you know, I understand that, you know, cost is a major issue, you know? But if you can address that railing part of it?
To be honest with you?
That would make me happy.
I'll be honest with you, I did have a conversation with Mr. Mahalan about the two sides, and we'd like to take those down and refurbish it so that the decking around it is a little bit more aesthetically pleasing and visual, so that people can walk by and see through it. So that is one of the things that we have on the list to do.
Because it, it has been brought to my attention that, you know, like the, you know, Main Street traffic and all that stuff with the T-111 is just, it doesn't fit in that area.
I agree.
And as you mentioned, the playhouse, if you could just like address that with some sort of railing?
I think that's an easy.
Pressure-treated lumber or whatever?
Easy fix.
I'll donate my time, I'll help you. Okay?
Put that on the record, please. But that is something that we had discussed, because the two barriers are, they were there, we want to take them down and redo it. So actually, that is something that we want to do sooner than later.
And I did see the planters that you have proposed to keep out there. Those, again, I believe do not fit on Main Street. I do know that La La Rona has some on theirs, however, they are not on Main Street. You have them set right now in a garden bed. Why not just use that garden bed right there? I know you, I'm sorry.
No.
I know you said like you want to possibly use your plantings for, you know, appetizers or part of your meals or whatever. But would Lesley allow that, being open to the public like that? I would not think so, myself. I'm all for green. I really am. Not the color, but the environment.
My concern was also the planters. I know in your original application, you talked about putting a flowering tree there and some bushes and mulch, which I honestly think would be beautiful there. I just, your food is so fabulous and the interior looks beautiful. I just kind of want to carry that out to the front.
Well, we had actually thought about doing the flowering bushes and stuff like that, but somebody came up with the concern about the bees. That's what stopped us immediately. Any kind of flowering plants would attract bees with people sitting outside. That's kind of why we tabled it. But, you know, to be honest with you, we got the planters, we can certainly put them in our back and have a greenhouse behind the enclosure with, not a problem, and grow some plants and make it look pretty. That's zero problem for us. We can do that tomorrow.
I'm just also concerned with planters. I mean, you have people with cigarettes, could put them out, there's birds flying over, cat, I mean.
And if you're going to grow vegetables and herbs and stuff in them to put on people's plates, you can't, you have to use cedar wood. You can't just use pressure, you can't use pressure-treated wood. Because it leaks arsenic into the roots of the vegetables and stuff and things that you plant. You have to use a special type of wood if you're going to eat something out of that planter.
Okay. All right.
So you would be.
So I would take them home.
So you would be open, then, what do you think the timeline would be to maybe plant some, a tree and some bushes and get some mulch down?
The tree I'm concerned about, because it was brought up last time we had this conversation about the bees.
We do have other trees on Main Street.
Main Street's got a lot of trees implanted, there's a big tree right in front of her for yak. Maybe some decorative bushes, there are bushes that don't have flowers.
Yeah, so anything pretty, yeah.
We just want to make sure that, anything that we put into the ground, like you said, you brought that whole thing. I don't want to plant something and then find out that, you know, it's attracting hornets. I don't need my customers.
Boxwoods don't, they don't flower, they don't have anything.
So, yeah.
Yeah, just to your point, yeah, I mean, you brought up fruit trees, and it was brought up that fruit falls off the tree, it may clean up, excuse me, it may burden our sidewalks and attract bees and something like that.
Okay, yeah, that's easy. We can do shrubs and small little plants around there. We can do shrubs and, and small little plants around there. That's not a problem at all. Yeah, the hope we want is to make it look nice.
Really happy that you made it. Like, I know, like, last year it was, you know, especially with COVID and stuff, you guys were hit really hard, so I'm really happy that you, that you made it. Congratulations.
Thank you.
You were tired.
Well, the word that keeps going around, that I hear people talking about, especially anyone new, this is a very embracing village and town. It's when we went to open our doors, people came by to wish us well. It's a, it's a very humbling feeling when people tell you that they hope you succeed and wish you well and embrace you. And it's a vibe that I hear a lot of time with the small businesses and with some playhouses. So I just want to say thank you. We, we take your comments very seriously, and we, we take your suggestions, and we'll put them to, to use. Not a problem at all.
I, I may be the bad guy in this one.
Oh, no.
Yep, sorry. This goes back to August of 2021, and I think you've had multiple conversations with Mr. Mahal about this issue. So I'm not comfortable closing this and renewing the permit until there's some type of permanent resolution. I'm hearing temporary fixes, and I am sympathetic to you as a businessperson. The bottom line is everything. That's why you're doing it. But this can has been kicked down the road for two years. So this needs to have some sort of permanent resolution. There needs to be some sort of plan. I'm not even telling you what I think the plan should be, but I think you need to sit down with Mr. Mahal and come up with something that's suitable for the Main Street Niantic. Obviously, everybody holds Main Street in a very high regard, and what you have there was considered temporary. And in my opinion, two years is not temporary.
Okay.
And I'm also getting the feeling that you're kicking it down the road a little bit again tonight. There needs to be a plan, a concrete plan with a timeline.
We had a contract to come out, like I said, and for $30,000, we can do it. I can't do it.
I'm not saying it's a $30,000 repair. I'm just saying, I'm not in favor of renewing this permit until there is a concrete plan.
I actually agree with Mr. Granitek. In terms of, like you said, you have a temporary deck right now. I'm sure, you know, by talking with Mr. Mahal and then the building official, they may allow you, which I believe we'll all be happy with, by putting up a deck, quote unquote, you know? So that, therefore, you know, if you do have, you know, not a concrete, but you'll have like pressure-treated wood or a wood of your choice or whatever, to where the rainwater will go down through the soil, you'll have a nice railing, you know, whether it be balusters or cable or whatever, that is much less than $30,000, you know? Could be five. Then you can plant your bushes, you know, something like that.
Mr. Mahal?
So we did actually meet out there last night because I wanted to ensure that we rate and address our issues tonight. And one of the things that was volunteered was the texture 111 issue, and I know we've all kind of chit-chatted about that. And it was volunteered that before I said a word, I wanted to remove those and replace them with balusters. I think that was our conversation. So a question for me is, would that suffice for now? Take that out, put some balusters in, get rid of the planters, put the three boxwoods in or whatever it will contain, and maybe two, and maybe three, we'll look at the size and shape. Would that work since we're all here right now? And if you chose to approve it that way, you may get a condition of approval.
Timeline.
You put a timeline on it. You put 14 days, you put 21 days, 30 days. 30 days seems to be, to me, more reasonable. It's certainly up to you as a group, would that, is that something you would adjust and be comfortable with?
Absolutely.
And Terry Donovan did say that he would help you, so.
Well, I know that.
I have no, no problems whatsoever. I'm also working on donating my time for, you know, rebuilding those planter boxes on Main Street.
Okay. So I could say, if you would give us.
With the playhouse, I'm sorry, with the playhouse coming to town, I mean, I think, you know, any upgrade would be awesome, would be great, you know? And another thing is, the copy of the application that we have here is from last year, with the date just scratched out to make it legal. I suggest that you fill out a new one.
Okay.
You know, date it, sign it, pay it, et cetera. Because even if we make a decision, this is an old copy that I have. I think we all have it. What do you have?
Originally dated February 18th, 2020, uh, 2022.
I actually don't have that.
To me, to me, we can either continue it until next week or, or do a motion tonight with the timeline. Two things, yeah.
We should make a motion, I think.
So it's up to the committee what they want to do?
I would like.
Motion?
I would like to make a motion now with a timeline.
Time.
I'm sorry?
We've got to close the public hearing.
All right, go ahead.
Do we have a motion to close?
Yeah, we're not there yet.
You're not, okay, you still have something.
So are we all done with the public part of it?
I'm just waiting for any of your questions, if.
Madam Chair, do you want to go to the?
We have to go to the public next. So are we finished with questions of the commission?
I believe so. I mean, it sounds like she's willing to work with the commission and the town in terms of, you know, dressing up Main Street.
Okay.
You know, and.
Okay, thank you.
I would just like to see whether it be with the conditions.
And we can make that motion in our meeting.
Okay. Perfect.
Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak for or against this patio seating? No, we're good? Now can I have a motion to close?
Make the motion to close the public hearing.
I second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried six, zero, zero. Thank you so much. So we're going to move on to our regular meeting with the approval of minutes of April
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of April 6, 2023.
Do we, do we have a second?
I second it.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Any abstain? Abstain?
Yeah, I was going to do that. We have one abstain and five, five ayes.
I'm going to get my germs if you want.
Okay, we have the continuation of the application of ZD &amp; Properties LLC for a special permit and design review to develop properties identified in the applications 338, 344, and 348 Main Street, Assessor MAP 11.2, lots 165 and 166 into a mixed-use project per sections 9.2.3 and 9.2.4, 25 and 24 of the zoning regulations.
What do we, continue? Continue.
Yes. So that's continued until next week.
Yep.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. We have a proposed text amendment to Section 20, addition of Section 20.20.9 of the Eastline Zoning Regulations for Niantic Bay Playhouse, 267-283 Main Street, Niantic Assessor's MAP 12.1 Lot 3. Is there any discussion? I know we all think it's great.
I think it's great. Yeah.
I think it's pretty cut and dry. Do we have a motion?
Yeah, I'll move to approve the text amendment to Section 20, in addition to Section 20.20.9 of the Eastline Zoning Regulations for a Niantic Bay Playhouse, 267 to 283 Main Street, Niantic Assessor's MAP 12.1 Lot 3.
Second it.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain? It passed six, zero, zero. Congratulations. Good luck.
Madam Chair, published next Thursday, effective on Friday.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Got it. Okay. Our next item is continuation of Candace Devon Detis for devs on Main for a renewal with special permit for outdoor dining at 255 Main Street, Niantic. Would like to make that motion.
I'll make a, I'll make a motion if, if that's okay.
Thank you.
I'll move to approve the application of Candace Devon Detis for devs on Main for a renewal, a special permit for outdoor dining at 255 Main Street with the following conditions. That the zoning official work out the modest improvements as discussed and have them completed by June 1st, and a completion of the application.
Sign.
All those in favor?
I second.
Oh, did we have a second?
Yeah, I did.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. I apologize.
We have a second? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain? Passed six, zero, zero. Thank you.
We did this last week. Is there any business?
Yeah, I have old business.
Oh, no, I know, I just wanted to get to that.
Under old business, I believe Mr. Mahal stepped out. I can go ahead, and he's working on it. One of these days, we're going to see it. We do need him for the, does someone want to step out and flag him in?
Madam Chair, can we take a quick break?
Sure. Let's take a five-minute break. New business. Mr. Mahal, will you schedule public hearings for the following?
I will, thank you.
Application of Todd Donovan for the clubhouse for a special permit for commercial indoor recreation, individual baseball, softball training at 15 Industrial Park Road, Niantic, Assessor MAP 26.1 Lot 2.
Madam Chair, weren't these written last week?
We did have them, but if they're not scheduled yet, we'll, we'll read them again. Number two, application of Dr. Kara Obodowski of the Niantic Veterinary Hospital for a special permit to operate a veterinary practice at Nine Lake Avenue, Niantic Assessor MAP 11.2 Lot 131.
Thank you.
Does the majority of the commission have business to bring up tonight that's not listed here?
You're going to cover the bylaws, right?
Yep. Last but not least, zoning official.
We're still going to be busy. We'll meet next week. We've got a pretty good agenda. May 4th and May 18th, I think it is, is filling up as well. We have that affordable housing that's, that's coming up too that we need to deal with, so we'll hear more.
Okay, thank you.
I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
The new car wash, the other, the other one is being totally demolished, started from scratch. Doesn't that, that does not require a special permit?
It, it does not require a special permit, it's an outright committee use of, need to go, I'm going to go back and take that, no.
Didn't they get a demolishing permit?
Yeah, they got a demo permit.
The old, the old one that was demolished, there was a special permit required.
Right.
That's correct.
I think the ruling is, I'm going to go back and look because I'll put that in my own car. I think the ruling was because there was an existing one, they haven't attempted it, they just, they haven't, they just rebuilt it, they didn't abandon their right to the old special permit, so you are correct. So we issued a permit to construct based on that, and I think, and we did talk to legal about that. It's an existing special permit, it doesn't go away. So under the rule, what we're doing is rebuilding that which was there, and it's a better system. We sent it up to deep just to make sure they were fine with it because it's in an app for, they're going to have to register with us as the previous one did, and the system is much improved, Whelan signed off on it as well.
Well, if it was not you in the position of zoning official, I would challenge that opinion.
Okay.
But I trust you, you'll have it, you'll have it made nice and so forth.
There, this developer is the same developer that's doing it.
I know.
It's 75, and they have been.
Yep.
They've crossed every D dotted, every I, and we've had obviously a couple of bumps in the road with, with the typical things like drainage and round and round. If you notice, I've saved those four big trees that are on Industrial Park Road that we originally planted, and we rounded around about that, and we had to do some extra things to try to save them and move some pipes. But we were able to do those kind of things, very clean site, and even when they were doing the demo, they were on the machine in the rain keeping the dust out.
Yeah, I think it's more of a legality issue.
Yeah, I don't, I don't understand the question. If you get into.
Speaking of trees.
I recall that.
How are we doing with Stop and Shop?
Well, who do you would ask? I thought you might. I had a meeting today with the owner of the property and his new attorney, and they may come before you to explain themselves. I'm working on that, and I will be talking to their attorney next week. We had a little bit of a meet and greet today, and we've talked extensively about that. He's got a couple of new users coming in the empty spaces on the far end, on the north end, so new tenants. So we kind of went around and around, his attorney intervened, and he and I are going to work that out, and I've asked if he would be willing to come and talk to you, if necessary, about the trees.
I personally don't want to hear the bull that's going to be thrown.
Well, that's where we're at, so.
This has been going on for 15 years.
Long time.
And we met today, and the owner argued, I got a right, and I argued the other side, and then the attorney intervened and said, I'll get together with Mr. Mahal, and then I've invited him here. So we're going to work on that next week. The new tenants aren't going anywhere because I won't sign off.
What are we talking, four feet to keep those trees? They're carving 25 or 30 feet out of the side of the road.
We're on the agreement, and so.
It's just that it's been 15 years.
Yeah.
And so he's going to come in, and then the owner is an attorney, and he is aggressive, I'll just put it that way. But I think we have a solution. Attorney Sweeney's now representing him, and I don't know if we can get him to appear at your next meeting, but I'll be working with him this week, and we'll find a slot if needed. He'll come before you because he's agreed to do it.
If they don't start to comply, what, what are our recourses that we can do?
Then I use their cease and desist, they can appeal that to the ZBA, say, I don't know what I'm talking about. And then I go defend that with, with our, with an attorney. And if they don't comply, then we go to court, and we get, seek a court order. I've got to go to court, and we do that regularly. Get a court order, and then there are fines and penalties. Currently, I have one property that's been fined $10,000 in legal fees, and they're being fined $200 a week, and they still haven't complied.
It's non-commercial.
Pardon me?
That's non-commercial.
That's correct, that's correct, but it's the same process.
Just for the benefit, for the benefit of the members here that were not involved with this permit, this, it was considered the gateway to Eastline, okay? You get off the exit, okay? And also, we didn't want to see the back of a grocery store with trucks and garbage cans and bins and the usual loading docks. We wanted to make it disappear, and that was one of the conditions that they promised. And they've been cutting these things down, they've done it three times. And if you, you got zoning regulations, you have a permit, if you don't stick to your guns, we might as well not be sitting here. So I don't want to hear much from these guys. So I don't wanna hear much from these guys.
Yeah, I understand that. He was in today. He's got two new... One new tenant and a potential another tenant. And we're not signing off till this gets straightened out, so he can't move anybody in, so he's got no choice but to act, because now it's costing money, as we all know in the end.
Good.
That's where the juice is, when it costs some money. So I'll report back at lunch meeting. I met with him today. I'll talk to Attorney Sweeney next week early and see how we're gonna resolve this, and if necessary, we'll invite him to come in.
So Ted resigned?
Ted has become somewhat incapacitated medically and can no longer practice. He's lost his voice as well as his hearing.
I don't think... Uh-uh. No.
And so he's really not practicing anymore. Mr. Attorney Sweeney's taking up so many of his cases that have been left unresolved.
So speaking of the gateway, how's that banner coming? That's been up there for three-plus years.
The banner's not illegal. I know you keep insisting it is. Attorney Harris handled that, and he made his points. We have an opinion from the attorney, and it's considered to be illegal. Now, they are... They were building a new sign near the banner, and they were supposed to take the other one down when it was done. I don't think it's completed yet. Once it's completed, then we'll squeeze them a little. We're happy to do that.
I do have the letters and all that right here.
Yeah, good.
But according to Mr. Harris, he said, "Oh yeah, two weeks, we'll have it done."
Understood.
Again, the same thing.
Understood.
Okay, shall we move on to the ex officio?
That's you, Anne.
Anne Chakalo, ex officio, from the Board of Selectmen. The big issue, really, that we've been dealing with for like the past two months is the budget. Board of Selectmen has completed their perusal of it. It went to the Board of Finance. I was actually at some of those meetings, and they have tentatively agreed on the budget, and they're gonna be presenting it May 8th. There'll be a town meeting to present to the town, and then after that, it will go to referendum. So really, that's the big news besides, as everybody knows, they're doing the construction, starting that for the exit 74 traffic. So it's... That's gonna be starting, and if people haven't already, and I think with the summer, there'll be more. The only other news that I know, that I received an email, that the first selectman will not be running again, and I just wanted to just publicly say that it's really... I was sad to hear he wasn't gonna be running again, and I think that I was, you know, privileged and honored to work with him on the Board of Selectmen. So that's all I have. Does anybody have any questions?
I do. What's the proposed mil rate that when it was going through the process and stuff? I heard it was like going up like 1.6 something, 6.2 or...
Close. 1.16 is where it's at right now.
All right.
And...
That's a big hike. That's... So when you talk about it with the Board of Selectmen, did they also have a Board of Ed that was there?
So what happens, just to kind of explain, is the Board of Selectmen, we deal with the town budget, and we're able to go line by line and say, you know, cut this. The Board of Ed, we actually look at it, review it, make comments, but we basically are required by law just to approve it, and it goes to the Board of Finance. The Board of Finance are the ones that can do the line items.
So then with the line items with Board of Ed, they did get that 7% increase then?
I don't know exactly what it is, but it was a 1.16 mil, is what they're saying.
Thank you, Anne.
Sure. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks. Comments from the planning liaison, the Planning Commission. I have the schedule here. It said Graniteuck for 4/11.
Was Mary...
That's funny, 'cause I knew it was coming up. I was actually in Florida.
I don't even know what month it is half the time.
I apologize for that. I had a feeling.
What month is it? We're in April.
I mean, more than happy to switch with someone.
Are we in April right now?
We're in April.
Okay.
The next one is May 9th, and it would be with Jett Harris. Will he be in town?
No, I will not be in town.
Okay, so then could Miss Markovits go?
Did she just switch? Could Terry, could you take mine?
Did you go to one before?
She did.
It was canceled.
Oh.
Oh, okay. So could you go?
Sure, let me just have a check there.
Thank you, Denise.
You're welcome.
If I don't go on, if I don't go, my husband's gonna kill me. Okay. Huh? No.
If anybody has a conflict going forward, just email me and all, so on.
Okay.
Yeah, I can cover her people after May. It's just, May, I have family obligations that I cut off.
That's no problem. That's May 9th. So that would be awesome.
Thank you so much, Denise.
Okay. And last but not least, we have more bylaw proposals for changes. Did everyone get a chance to review them, and are they ready to vote on them?
Yes, I read them.
Do we have any motions, or do you want to discuss it first?
My... After reviewing it, my only issue, I mean, you know, I didn't see any... Anything really is in terms of the small corrections as anything that is consequential and changes anything that we've previously approved. The only other outstanding issue is the issue of whether or not alternates participate, and I feel like... I feel like maybe we need to talk to legal about that. I don't know what the actual consequences of that are and what the pros and the cons really are, so I guess I'm sort of lost on that one issue.
I actually have the same response. I think Article 6 is really a glossary. I know in some contracts, glossaries are at the front. I think it's more traditional to keep a glossary at the back of a document. I don't see any reason to change that.
I agree.
The other changes, there were some miscellaneous verbiage changes. I feel like the original verbiage is more clear, concise, and correct, so I don't... I don't support any changes. Others, when they're to change the word "any" to "a" or "a" to "any," "with" to "in," "into" with, I didn't see it made any difference at all. And I agree, I had the same note of the only change of any consequence would be if alternates are allowed to speak in hearings.
I personally feel that it's important. Like, take for example, tonight, I had to sit back up again. If I were in the audience last week, it would've been nice if I could've asked a question to the folks sitting there. It wasn't obvious that we could, because I wasn't here, but I think it's important that alternates be able to ask questions, because they may at some point have to sit.
I guess, are you asking... That's the... That's the... One of the issues I have is that what is it... How do you define participate? Because are you asking a question as a commission member in the audience of the commission, or are you asking it as a member of the public or as a zoning...
Can I address this, please?
Well, that's gonna be a check finish, please.
Okay. Well, he's asking a question. I have the answers right here.
Yeah, I... That, to me, needs clarification. I don't know what exactly this means to participate.
And in your proposal, how did you mean it?
Well, during our training that we had a couple of weeks ago, it was brought up from one of the presenters that alternates can participate in the public hearing only. And so, as you know, there was a question and answer box on there. So I said, "Alternates can participate in public hearings until they are closed." Did I hear that correctly? And Attorney Slater said, "You did. Because it is unknown whether they will be called to vote on the matter until the time of deliberation comes. The alternates have the right of participation throughout the hearing. When the time comes..." Excuse me, "When the time does come for deliberation on the matter, only alternatives who are seated at that time should participate." So there was a... Go ahead.
I just wanna go point by point. I just wanna be clear about it. So I get that, but how are they seated? Are they... Are they going to be up, sitting on the commission as a commissioner during the public hearing?
The way that I interpret it, from what I understood from our presentation, was that they could be like Mr. Ginsberg tried to do at the last public hearing, was ask a question. And Madam Chair says, you know, according to our bylaws, you can't.
So at the point in time that we would be asking questions of the applicants, we would... They would be able to ask the same questions in the same manner? At that time?
As long as the public hearing is open. Correct. So then, another...
But do they get to vote, Terry?
Can't... Excuse me?
Only if they're seated.
Only if they're seated, okay. I just wanna make sure.
So can Attorney Olson elaborate on alternate members being seated for deliberations but not being able to vote or give comments after deliberations are completed? Attorney Olson, alternates cannot comment during deliberations at all unless they are seated in place of a full member. If deliberations continue onto a second night, and the alternate who was seated on the first night and participated in deliberations cannot attend, I would be careful about replacing them with another alternate. Another question to ask, if you can't attend a commission meeting and require an alternate, what are the rules for how your position is filled? Can it be any alternate? Must it be one from your political party, if appointed position? Does it have to be voted on by entire commission? Attorney Olson's reply, "The chair has discretion to fill the slot as they see fit. Most try to alternate the alternates, so everybody gets a chance to participate. But again, even alternates should participate in public hearings, so it is only a question of deliberations."
Now, those... That piece of paper that you have, Terry, is that a suggestion or is it a mandate? Do we have to, or do we have a choice not to? Does the commission right now have a choice to say yes or no to those items you just read? Because you're making it seem like we have to do it, and I read that we don't.
No, I'm not saying that at all. What I'm saying is, I think it would be fair if they could participate.
Okay.
It is totally up to the commission and what they wanna do. But think of yourself if you're an alternate, and you wanna ask a question on it. You know, you won't be able to. And then you get seated, like Ms. Markovits tonight happened for Mr. Dwyer. If she was here last weekend, excuse me, last week, and she had a question, she wouldn't have been able to. So and for Ms. Thurlow to say to me last week that, you know, our town attorney has already been, you know, asked this question...
I did run into him.
Can you finish talking, please?
I can talk.
Okay.
I'm sorry. I did run into him, but I did ask him his opinion.
You ran into him or Mr. Mahalan?
No, I didn't.
You saw Mark? I just asked him.
I don't need to answer that.
I would just like... I would just like to make a... Can I make a motion right now? Because we can sit here and argue about this all night long, and I'm just...
I mean, I had... I had just have one last thought on this, and then I'm gonna have my opinion, and that's gonna be it. The issue of whether or not an alternate can participate and ask a question, does that deprive them of the information that they need to make a decision if they're seated in the future?
No, it doesn't. They get a packet.
I agree.
Well, sometimes you get a packet.
Everybody gets a packet. You get a packet tonight, every alternate gets a packet every single meeting.
They're participating in the sense that they're hearing the same information.
Right.
They may not be able to ask a question, but they may be able to get the answer to their question.
And Mr. Mahalan does make sure they get a packet.
If you read the bylaws as they propose now, in there, it states that if an alternate has a question that he would like to... He or she would like to address on the agenda or any item, they are encouraged to go up and see the chair. So by adding this to there, that would not have to happen. So basically, you're just replacing that article in the bylaws with what...
I guess I don't see the need to make a substantial change then. If we're not depriving an alternate the ability to make a decision if they have to, if they have the ability to answer a question, then I think it's a moot point.
They cannot ask a question unless it is brought up prior to the meeting. And how would they be able to ask an applicant?
Because the concern would be is that they're gonna be seated for a subsequent meeting. That's the concern, is that they're being deprived of the ability of asking a question on information seeming presented, and they may have to be seated if the public hearing is continued and someone can't show up for a subsequent meeting. If you're... If you have a public hearing and you're asking questions, every member is seated. So at that point, every member who's going to vote is seated. So unless they're gonna attend to... Have to attend a subsequent meeting, it's a moot point, is it not?
Exactly.
No, it is.
I agree. You're right. I agree.
Mr. Peck, do you have an opinion?
Can I finish, please?
Come on, I would like his opinion if he has one.
It sounds to me...
I would like Mr. Peck to give an opinion if he has one.
I believe that an alternate should be able to participate in the public hearing.
Thank you.
Thank you. But I have a question. In here, we say, "Panel consists of no more than six commission members." Nowhere does it say that we need three alternates, I don't think. Should we put that in?
Is there anything that says we don't need three alternates?
I think it does say...
Or can't have three alternates?
We certainly vote at the polls for three alternates. Maybe...
And during the public hearing, are the alternates able to get up to the podium and ask a question, or no?
They could.
Okay, so they could still...
No, no. If this is entered into our bylaws, they would be capable of doing that. Right now, they are not. Because in the way that it reads right now, that they are...
So I go back, so I have to go back.
Can I finish?
But I have... But I have... I have to clarify... Try to clarify your point, so I can make a decision.
Understand, okay? Sure.
So if you're... So now, are they participating as a member of the public, or are they participating as a chair of a commission member?
They are...
It's gotta be one or the other.
In a public hearing, they are participating as a member of the public. However, if they cannot be involved in deliberations unless if they are seated for a commission member, so if they want to ask a question during public hearings, they can. Now, once a public hearing is closed and an alternate is sat and has a question, legally, it can't be answered, because the public hearing is closed.
So they're... Are they acting as a commission member, asking questions of the applicant, or are they acting as a member of the public, asking questions of the commissioner, or both?
I'm gonna say both, probably, because just like us, we have our own questions, right? Which we are allowed to ask during the public hearing.
I remember coming to a zoning meeting. I was an alternate then, and I wanted to say something as a public resident, and I was told I could not.
It's a conflict of interest. Clear conflict of interest.
Just FYI.
Even as an alternate...
Conflict of interest on what, Mr. Graniteuck?
Acting as an alternate who's hearing the facts and could potentially act on the facts and representing a member of the public at the same time. You're an elected sworn commission member. You're not... We're not the public. We're representing the public. We can't be the public and represent the public at the same time, I do believe. But again, probably a question for legal.
Then you could ask Mr. Mahalan to ask our attorney.
No, or we can make a... We can make a vote right now tonight.
To me, it's not fair. If you're a member of the commission, you should be able to ask questions during the public hearing.
I mean, I was an alternate. I actually didn't mind not being able to, but I guess the problem I have is not so much asking the question, as if someone gets up and wants to grandstand with an opinion and try to sway the six sitting members, and as a zoning person, maybe you pull more weight. I don't know. The other thing is, the people that vote are the ones that are going to be held liable, accountable, and responsible for their opinion, not the alternates. I just... I think it's worked well how it's been, and, you know, I would...
It pretty much a whole stuff conflict.
Very good point. Very good point.
I'm not for it.
And again, how are you represented on the record when you stand up at that podium?
You would identify yourself as the individual and as a member of the zoning commission as an alternate.
Right, but is... Right, but is, if the alternate does talk Terry, legally, are they going to be held accountable if there's a lawsuit and we have to go and we get depositioned or whatever? They will not be held accountable as strongly as the commission, as a regular commissioner member. Not that I'm like saying that the alternates are less than. I don't believe that at all. But they're not held to the same standard as we are.
For example, the public is not allowed to ask questions. They are allowed to make statements. As a commission member, I think we all should be allowed to ask a question. And you can identify yourself as a commission member asking a question.
Do we have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the bylaws as previously amended by this commission.
I second it.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed?
You forgot to ask.
Oh, discussion. We've been discussing it so much. Sorry. Discussion.
I just kind of want an answer to my question about should we define the number? No? Don't you?
But as you know, you vote, the public goes out and votes. Because it's an elected board. I don't, I think it's understood.
Must be in a, in a common ordinance.
I read it in there. It said that zoning had.
It may be in the ordinance.
It is.
But I'm not sure because I certainly haven't looked at that in a while.
I believe it's in the ordinances where it says there's six, um, six and three.
Okay.
So are we going, so?
So are we ready to vote or you want more discussion?
So you want to leave the, for instance, what Mr. Dwyer brought up, the general statute of nine dash one sixty-seven A to where it's at and not on the panel?
Yeah.
It's contradicting in the bylaws. If you all read the bylaws, you would understand all that. I'm not saying that you didn't.
I don't think.
You may have missed it, which, which is fine, but.
Can I?
You know?
Yes, go ahead.
So.
And so, excuse me, and just one point. So if you vote the way that it is proposed, what Madam Chair did, there are certain things missing that you want to leave in there such as no adjournment required. You are leaving in there, you know, the part of not being included in the town charter.
So what did you do?
It sounds like that.
Where's your copy?
It should state that, you know, town charter, the existing Article Three, Number Eleven, right now as you propose, Madam Chair.
We have adjournment.
You have vacancies will be filled according to procedures defined in Section two point five point two and two point five point five. And that is it.
And then, and then you didn't bring, we went over it line by line, but you didn't bring it up at the time we went over it. I'm just.
No, because it was already in there. It was, you forgot to add it in there.
I didn't.
Slightly, slightly.
Sorry. I don't know if it was a typographical error or what.
Is this the same copy you have?
This is the copy that was emailed to us, from you.
Then it could have been a typographical error.
And I'm not saying it's not, I'm just saying, but that should be in there.
So of the town charter, but for now, let's go over your proposals.
We just did it already. How many times are we gonna do it?
No, not go over it, vote on it.
Yes, let's vote on it.
Well, the, the motion was made by Mr. Granitick to approve the ones that proposed by you, which to me are incorrect. So therefore.
Let's vote on them. If we have changes, we can do an amendment.
Ken, I can't make a comment.
Yeah, Anne, go ahead please.
The only comment, because if you were open for discussion, is that if an alternate wants to ask a question during public hearing, and, and let's say they can't, and then they get seated and they have to make a decision. If they haven't had their question answered because, answered, and sometimes when you get a packet of information, as you all do, you don't get your questions answered. If that person could ask that question when they are seated, then they'll be able to make a better, more reasoned decision if they can ask the question.
Exactly.
It's like, as a officio, I'm actually allowed to ask a question or bring up a point. So, that, that's how I think it is because I think that then they are gonna be better positioned to make a well-informed decision. And I think they just ask the question, you know, as an alternate, you know, as, as you guys are asking questions, not being persuasive or influential because that, that is not their job at that point. So that's, that's what I would say. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so can we make a vote now?
Does everybody know what we're voting on?
Who knows? Yes.
I don't.
I don't either.
Okay, we're vote, I believe that we are voting on the changes that were initially, that were sent to us for the bylaws. And that originally they were supposed to be just for simple things like typos and stuff like that. Then Mr. Donovan found some other information out where we possibly can allow the alternates to speak at a public hearing. They can't vote, but they can speak and ask questions. So we are here to decide if we're going to allow the alternates to speak at a public hearing and ask questions, but they may not vote. And that's what we're here to discuss. And is that correct?
Well, he also made other proposals about moving Article Six to Article One and changing the verbiage of several paragraphs.
The language that's in there that he did, I don't think that it's, it doesn't sound grammatically correct to me. But I only went to college for a certain time, but anyways, no, I don't. I want to make a motion. Let's just go back now.
Well, there is a motion on the floor and to correct everybody, so the motion that Mr. Granitick made was for the second copy, which we made all these after our discussions that were presented to us. This was the draft that Madam Chair sent to all of us. In this draft, excuse me?
There wasn't a draft.
In this proposed by.
It captured what everyone proposed during the argument, time they spent going over everyone and every paragraph of the bylaws. I sent it out to see.
I'm fine without my changes, except for the fact that you do not have adjournment in there. You don't have of the town charter in Article Three, Number Eleven. And I believe those should be in there. Again, it is up to you guys.
Does someone want to amend the motion to include those two things?
You guys are dead on your decision already, so take a vote. You have my support. And I'm sure you're all.
I'd like to, I'd like to make a motion.
We have a motion on the floor.
What?
Excuse me. We have a motion. We have a second. All those in favor of not doing, it was basically not doing the latest proposals, keeping it as I had sent out previously, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
So it's three, three.
So you'll need another motion because it didn't carry.
Yeah, so it didn't pass.
It did not pass. So we need another motion.
Depends on how you word things. So you need to make choices.
Does anyone want to make another motion? Would we like to continue this to another meeting?
No. That's my opinion.
I actually don't know what we do in this situation if we don't have a.
So your, your motion, so you're trying to make a decision, your motion needs to be, are you approving of new changes or are you keeping what you have before so you have to craft your motion in that fashion?
We have a what? Oh, crafting a motion. Okay.
So, are you approving proposed changes or staying with your old, that's what you can decide.
Okay.
I thought we just voted on keeping the old, old.
No.
No, it didn't pass.
It didn't?
Not the way you phrased it.
The tie is a bit.
Yep.
So nothing, it does, it's not going either way?
I would make a motion, but I know it's gonna fail, so why even bother?
Does anyone want to make a motion, keeping the original bylaws but adding adjournment in the part of the sentence that the typist left off?
I actually have a question for Terry. Terry, what's the part in the charter that you're talking about, about adding? What, what's the number of it again?
It's just Number Eleven in, in Article, what is now, it just, you know, probably like Anne said, just a typo to where she forgot to add of the town charter.
Because I have my book right here. Show me, do you have the page?
The bylaws are not, yeah.
Those, oh, I don't, I grabbed the wrong one.
Debbie, Article Three.
Yep.
Just down here. This is from Anne's proposal that she sent out, that the commission came up with after our last discussion. It was just that, you know, whether it be a typo or, you know, probably typed it all up, you know, just forgot about it. Right now it states vacancies will be filled according to procedures defined in Section two point five point two and two point five point five. That's the way it reads right now.
And you think that Article Three, Terry, is it, it must have changed then and they must have re, renumbered the ordinance or something?
No.
Is that what it is? I'm not sure I understand.
So how long has the?
This is for the commission. So what it was discussed before. Basically, we added, you know, two point five point five to it. I believe that's what it was versus the two point five point two. Oh, here we go, yeah. So one of the proposed amendments was to add Article Three, Number Eleven, Section two point five point two, and to add and two point five point five of the town charter.
So it's basically the wording of the town charter that was missing.
On that section, yes.
And under order of proceedings, we have a call the meeting to order, so the suggestion is to add adjournment.
And you don't have the chair report in there anyway.
The what in there?
Chair, chairman's report.
Yeah, we've added a lot of things since last time. It used to be just a few.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion.
May I?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the bylaws as previously amended and represented via email by you with the addition of the corrections of Article Three, Section Eleven, adding the terminology at the end of the line, two point five point five of the town charter. Correct the clerical error, error, adding the terminology of the town charter. Also, Section Four, or, uh, in the order of proceedings at meetings, adding chair report and adding Item Thirteen, adjournment.
Is there a second?
I second that.
All those in favor?
Wait a minute.
Oh, okay. Is there a discussion?
I just have a question. Does this give the alternate the right to participate in the public hearing?
No.
No.
It does not.
That would be a future amendment if we wanted to do that.
But we added the other stuff.
I'm just curious, Madam Chair, you know.
I stated my, I stated my opinion.
For, for ten years, this has not been filed with the town. And now that it was brought to the commission's attention, now we are in a hurry to get it filed on the town. Why?
Because we just found out it has not been filed.
It has not been filed for over ten years.
Well, you're a chairman for, and you've been on, joining for ten years.
It came to my light Debbie, and that's when I started this. That is correct.
And so now that we've done it, we wanting to vote on it and file it?
Again, other, other than alternate participation in, in the two changes that we just made, the rest of it, in my opinion, is inconsequential. And I think business can be conducted fairly and lawfully for the town.
Well, I have alternates. If we only need four and four people. Yeah, but if they cannot ask questions during a public hearing.
They're absorbing the same.
What is the point?
They're absorbing the same information I am.
And they get the meetings and they get to look at the tapes.
But we get to ask questions. They do not during a public hearing. Now, they cannot deliberate.
They are not, they are alternates for a reason.
You have your minds made up, that's fine. I just don't support it. I cannot agree, that's all.
I'm calling a seal here.
Carry on.
Let's, let's vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
That, that's what the new, we're gonna add what, Terry?
No, it's.
We're not aye.
Terry G.
Terry G.
I'm talking about the things Terry D said about Article, we're not even.
The motion on the floor was to do what we previously agreed upon, fixing the clerical error and adding adjournment in the chairman's.
Okay, all right.
Notes and of the town charter.
All right. I second that.
Article Three.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
How many? I'm sorry, how did you vote?
Yeah, I voted in favor.
Okay, so it passed four. Four.
Four, two.
Two. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion, we adjourn.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.